You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
I'd like to officially call to order the Tuesday, May 28th, Fayetteville City Council meeting. Thank you for joining us this evening. At this time, we will have invocation by Bishop Hadley with God's prophetic and apostolic ministry, following which we will have the pledge allegiance, which we would ask that you would please remain standing for that, and after that, we will have a video tribute to the service members in honor of Memorial Day. Bishop?
Let's bow our heads. Father, we thank you for this afternoon, God, coming together here with this meeting, God, with the mayor and all his councilmen. Father, we ask that you put blessings upon them, God, invoke wisdom and knowledge that they make wise decisions, God, and we ask, God, those that have come, that they will participate wisely, and we ask that they also receive wisdom and knowledge, make wise decisions for our city of Fayetteville. Father, we ask that your blessings continue to flow, and we give you praise for everything you have done for this city thus far, and we praise you, God, at the things you're about to do tonight, even in the budget, God. We ask your blessings upon the budget, God, and those who have prepared it, and we ask, God, wherever there need to be certain things to be done, we ask that wisdom and knowledge and wise decisions will be done for the whole body in Fayetteville. We ask these blessings in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Well, Bishop, if you could, tell us a little bit about yourself and your ministry?
Okay, I'm a former retired soldier from the military, 26 years, six months, three days, and a couple of hours. Because when I retired, I had a clock on me counting down because I was thankful that I made it through all the torments and things that went forth. Throughout my time in the military, I was safe. God kept me. I thank God for that. I have a ministry of God's prophetic apostolic ministries. Our mission is, first of all, to help anyone from the smallest child to the oldest individual to receive salvation in all areas, not just physically, not just spiritually, but in all areas, a whole body. And my mission as a pastor is, I have two things God gave me to do, that is leadership and money, to teach the body about leadership and help leadership, and show the body how to use money to benefit the body.
Thank you, Bishop. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for your service to the nation and to this community. And truly, you are a prophet because you knew that it was going to take prayer for this budget the manager's going to present tonight?
Yes, sir.
So, we look forward to it, and thank you. All right, council, you know, this past weekend, we can never show enough gratitude to the servicemen and women, not only those who are in this community that have served, and I'm joined on the dais by many tonight, but those who paid the ultimate sacrifice. We have Memorial Day, and so at this time, we, corporate communications has prepared a video tribute in honor of the men and women for Memorial Day.
Andrews Tower, good morning. Angel Flight Bravo Zero Two, ready for takeoff. Angel Flight Bravo Zero Two, you're number one for takeoff, runway two five. Get 'em home, boys.
All I ever wanted to do was fly. Leave this world and live in the sky. I let the C-130 out of Fort Worth Town. I go up some days I don't want to come down. Well, I fly that plane called the Angel Flight. Come on, brother, you're with me tonight. Between heaven and earth, you're never alone on the Angel Flight. Come on, brother, I'm taking you home. I love my family and I love this land, but tonight this flight's for another man. We do what we do 'cause we heard the call. Some gave a little, but he gave it all. I fly that plane called the Angel Flight. Come on, brother, you're with me tonight. Between heaven and earth, you're never alone on the Angel Flight. Come on, brother, I'm taking you home. Come on, brother, I'm taking you home.
Andrews Tower, good afternoon. Angel Flight Bravo Zero Two, checking in. Two niner zero, we got a hero in port tonight. Roger, radar contact, Godspeed.
Well, the carpet's quiet and the stars are bright. Feels kinda like church in here tonight. It don't matter where we touch down. On the Angel Flight, it's sacred ground. When I fly that plane called the Angel Flight, got a hero riding with us tonight. Between heaven and earth, you're never alone on the Angel Flight. Come on, brother, I'm taking you home. Come on, brother, I'm taking you home. Come on, brother, I'm taking you home. Come on, brother, I'm taking you home.
Andrews Tower, good afternoon. Good Angel Flight Bravo Zero Two, security on five miles.
Thank you. Thank you for all those who've served and paid the ultimate sacrifice for our nation. At this time, we would ask that Mr. Gerald Newton, Mr. Mike Martin, and the City of Fayetteville inspectors, if you could meet me at the podium.
Tonight, we're recognizing some of our great city employees. We have a proclamation from the mayor, and it says, "Whereas, our city is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster. And whereas, our confidence in the strength and integrity of those buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention specialists, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas, the guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a U.S.-based organization that brings together local, state, and federal officials that are experts in the build environment to create and implement the high-quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. Whereas, no code, no confidence, the theme for Building Safety Month 2019 encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2019 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure the safety of their built environment and recognizes that the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies save lives and potential homes and businesses. Whereas, each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to us all by the local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of City Council, do honorably proclaim today, in the year of 2019, to be a special day in honor of the celebration of Building Safety Month. Signed, Mayor Mitch Colvin."
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your work.
At this time, could we have Mr. Sampson of circa 1865 meet Mayor Colvin at the podium for a proclamation to read by Councilmember Tisha Waddell?
Whereas, Juneteenth is the oldest celebration of the emancipation of African-American slaves and is so named for the June 19, 1866, adoption of Black Independence Day in Galveston, Texas. And whereas, Juneteenth celebrates America's commitment to liberty and equality in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, along with the Emancipation Proclamation issued by President Lincoln on January 1st, 1863, and the 13th Amendment to the Constitution, which abolished slavery ratified by Congress on December 6th, 1865. And whereas, the U.S. Census discloses that the population of North Carolina in 1860 was 992,622, of which 331,059 were enslaved, including about 1,500 slaves living in Fayetteville of the 4,800 residents. And whereas, the history of African-Americans is a study in resilience for the plight of slavery in our history, and today for the over 45 million people in forced labor, child labor, and other forms of human trafficking. And whereas, Juneteenth provides a historic opportunity for all Americans to learn about and recall achievements of our enslaved ancestors, and to reflect on the completed cycle of freedom for all colors, creeds, cultures, religions, and countries of origin. And whereas, the 154th anniversary of the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation will be celebrated in Fayetteville at circa 1865's inaugural Juneteenth Freedom Fest on Saturday, June 15th, 2019. Now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of City Council, do hereby honorably proclaim the 19th of June in the year of 2019 to be a special day in honor of this celebration of Juneteenth Freedom Festival. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Fayetteville to be affixed this 28th day of May 2019.
Thank you all. Thank our wonderful inspections department. Thank you, Mr. Sampson, and the folks that have worked so hard to bring Juneteenth celebration to the city of Fayetteville. Thank all of you. At this time, I would defer to Councilmember Jensen. We have a special guest with us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce Alexis Diana. She is a rising junior at Cumberland Polytech High School. She is the 2019, 2020 FCYC Vice Chair, and she is also the State Youth Council's Sergeant of Arms. So, we've got a good leader coming up, and we start, she started her 10th grade year, and so hopefully, we'll have her for all three years, which I'm sure we are. Thank you.
My name is Alexis Diana, and I'm a rising junior at Cumberland Polytechnic High School. I'm very excited to be here and update you on the Fayetteville-Cumberland Youth Council. I'm very proud to say that there are 27 graduating seniors who graduated or are graduating with FCYC honor cords. In preparation for the next upcoming year, we hosted our election night. Candidates gave their speeches, and members voted on who was going to be the future leaders of FCYC. I'm very eager to start fresh as the new Vice Chair of FCYC. This wouldn't be possible without our amazing City Council, and on behalf of the Fayetteville-Cumberland Youth Council, I say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diana. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for the great work you're doing on the youth council. Council, at this time, we'll have item 5.0 as the approval of the agenda.
So be it, Mr. Mayor.
So, we have a motion by Councilmember Wright. Is there a second?
Second, sir.
A second by Councilmember here. Any discussion on the motion to approve the agenda? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous, and we have all 10 green lights present tonight. We've had quite a while where we've had one or two missing, so welcome back, Councilmember Wright and Dawkins and Arp, I think. You've been here? I'm sorry. All right. All right, I thought you were missing. Okay. All right, so, motion carries. Item 6.0 is the consent agenda, and as indicated upstairs, I would like to pull item 6.011 so that whenever a motion is made, if you all can please include that item. Also, Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to pull item 6.013, the award for the design-build contract for team paying for construction of the skateboard park, part of the Parks and Rec Bond project in Rowan Park.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. So, item 6.013. Is there another item? Okay, Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you. I'd like to pull item 6.012, Resolution of Support for NCDOT to install a multi-use path and sidewalk on Murchison Road and the widening from south of Panalee Drive to the Fayetteville Outer Loop for discussion.
Okay, thank you. So, item 6.012 is joined with the other two. So, Councilmember Arp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it pleases the council, I would move that we approve the agenda with the modifications of pulling item 6.011, 6.012, and item 6.013.
So, I have a motion by Councilmember Arp, a second by Councilmember Waddell. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. All right. Item 6.011, if we could, this item was to consider to approve the 2019-2020 Plan for Community Development Block Grant and Home Annual Action Plan. Ms. Block, thank you for coming up tonight. So, council, basically, as we previously discussed, wanted to pull this item. This is a very important part of many of the issues that we are dealing with in the community, and a lot of times, some of the citizens may not understand because it's quite a comprehensive five-year plan, so I just wanted, Ms. Block, to kind of give us maybe a brief overview of what this is and what we're proving tonight.
Sure. So, what we have before you is the 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan. It's the fifth and final year of the 2015-through-2020 Consolidated Plan. The five-year consolidated plan gives us the direction to go for the next five years of CDBG and home funds. The consolidated plan identified decent, affordable housing, suitable living environments, and assistance with economic opportunities as the three main goals for the five-year consolidated plan. As I said, this is the fifth and final year. We will embark on a new consolidated plan this fall.
Okay, and, Ms. Block, can you just tell some of the areas that you all cover, like the objectives of this five-year goal were to preserve and improve and expand affordable housing for low-to-mod income? Can you just run over that real quick?
Sure. I'm going to give you some examples of the work that we did this past year. So, as you know, Oak Ridge Estates, the Habitat Project, the B Street Revitalization Homes, West Fayetteville Apartments, Hope Loop Commons, MacArthur Park, and West Cumberland. There were over 300 units of housing in mixed, single-family and multifamily housing built with CDBG and home funds this year. We also did economic development programs where we assisted businesses with some gap financing and some working capital for various projects, inventory, equipment, et cetera, whatever the need was. And as you know, some of the limitations with our program is that it has to meet the low-to-mod income objective, so we can't help the number of citizens we'd like, but as you know, coming in this year, we're going to present some new programs that expand our footprint in the city.
Okay, and thank you. So, some of the areas that I particularly wanted to share with the public was, one, as you hit specific projects, but the main goal was to expand decent and affordable housing options in the city. Two was to create an environment that increased neighborhood improvement, so provide efforts to those citizens in the newly annexed area to extend water and sewer, pave remaining streets in various communities, support homeless programs, and eliminate slum and blight. And then, three, economic opportunity was to provide loan and grant programs for the development and expansion of small businesses, create job opportunities for entrepreneurship and job seekers training. So, we have a number of programs that this department handles in the city. There was even some programs, if you were going to some of the trade schools, that there was some assistance to help with the initial starter kits for maybe beauticians, barbers, or some of those trades. And so, we invite you to look on our website and contact Ms. Block or the members of her department. They have money available if you fit within the criteria. Want to make sure that the citizens get everything that they have to offer, and I'm very excited by what the next five years will be. And, Ms. Block, I've got a question from Councilmember Chris, but I wanted to highlight, in your report, it showed an amount from the federal government that said we were eligible to borrow up to $7 million. Can you explain what that is?
That's correct. So, entitlement municipalities are afforded an opportunity to borrow five times their allocation as a Section 108 guaranteed loan. So, what that means is we'll be able to leverage that $7 million if we have a project, and we will guarantee essentially the loan to the bank. So, it's got to be a project, obviously, of high income potential so that we can pay the money back. It's not an additional grant. It's a loan, but it's going to afford us an opportunity again to stack the different sources of funding out there to do some of the more creative and bigger projects that we'd like to embark on.
All right. We'll look forward to it. Councilmember Chris?
Ms. Block, in the Consolidated Annual Performance Report, are there provisions in the CDBG funds to help hurricane victims, or is that a separate?
So, we, it is a separate pot of money. It's still called CDBGDR, and that's the disaster recovery portion of it. As you know, those funds have been a little slow-moving. We have seen CDBGDR contracts closed, though, so people are starting to get the funding for the rehabilitation of their homes. HMGP was another hurricane-related program for acquisition of homes, so there are multiple programs. You'll hear about a new program in a couple of weeks called SARF. So, they are separate programs, but they target primarily low-to-mod income.
Would you, because there may be some that will holler "CDBG, CDBG," would you explain what that is and what it means for our citizens?
Sure. CDBG is the Community Development Block Grant, and that's a HUD program that allows municipalities to determine where they spend their HUD allocation for low-to-modern income families to help with affordable housing, economic opportunities, and improved quality of life. That's why we have the Consolidated Plan. We bring in a consultant. We will hold a number of charrettes, but CDBG entitlement cities allows Fayetteville to determine how we spend our money.
And these community development block grant funds come from where?
HUD. It's a federal program, yes.
Housing and Urban Development.
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Ms. Block, what is your office's contact number if there's someone watching that would like to call you and inquire a little bit further?
So, you can call us at 910-433-1590.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Counsel, we'll need a motion to accept the report. Councilmember Arp?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we accept the report as presented.
Okay. There's a motion by Councilmember Arp. Who was the second? Councilman Dawkins? Any discussion on the motion? Go to staff for that. Staff, is this an approval?
Mr. Mayor, if I can amend it, that we accept the report and approve the action plan as presented.
Okay, all right. That covered it either way, Mr. Chris. All right. So, we have a motion by Councilmember Arpa, a second by Councilmember Dawkins to accept and approve Consolidated Plan. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Item 6.012, Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you. So, recently, we had a presentation by DOT in regards to this particular item, and I'd like for Mr. Bauer, if you can, where's Mr. Bauer? There he is. If you can just come up and briefly, I don't know if the picture from the presentation is able to be put up. I know it's in our packet, but if you can just explain to the public what this is that we're talking about and how, you're not Mr. Bauer, but you'll do, though. You'll be just fine. If you can just explain to the public what this is about, Mr. Jurnigan, and if you can just give an idea of where we are and how this may potentially pan out, and also, I remember during the presentation to the Corridors Committee, that there was some discussion of how this will line up with a potential path, I guess, going down toward the mall area in order to just create this contiguous walking space. So, if you can just give a little information about that, that would be very helpful.
Yes, ma'am. So, what you have before you tonight is a resolution of support that DOT has requested the city approve as they began very initial steps in the design of a project along Murchison Road from just south of Pamley Drive to the Fayetteville Outer Loop. So, I'd like to say that's step one of 1,000. So, they're needing or requesting support from council to include the pedestrian and bicycle components that they will need to begin the design of the project as a whole. So, those recommendations include a 10-foot-wide multi-use path on the east side of Murchison Road and a 5-foot-wide sidewalk on the west side of Murchison Road. So, once that support is received, then they can begin to design the roadway itself and determine what the impacts will be. So, they're at very initial stages. As they continue along with that process, they'll look to go to the public in August of this year, August-September timeframe, and at that point, they'll have a concept of the entire roadway, and will be looking for feedback from local officials, stakeholders along the corridor, property owners, general public, and they'll receive those comments and process those to begin to work towards their final design.
Sounds good. All right, Councilmember Hare?
Yes, sir. Mr. Jurnigan?
Yes, sir.
And thanks for presenting that to us. One more thing, whenever that meeting starts in August, it's been some of the normal practices that DOT will put the very, very large digital signs up, kind of making people aware, just in case sometimes they don't always get letters in the mail or however, other ways that we contact them. Would that be done this time?
I can request them to do that, yes, sir. I don't know that they've selected the location of where the meeting or anything like that will be held. Sometimes those are a little constrained on where the signs can be put, but yes, sir, we will certainly request them to do that.
Make a request for you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. And thank you for, if you can let Mr. Burns and DOT know for adding those caution signs to the concrete meeting on Pamley, that newly installed meeting that everyone was having trouble making the turn. I see they've got the reflectors out there, so.
A motion, sir.
All right, so, Counsel, we'll look to you. We need a, Madam Waddell, is that sufficient?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution of support for NCDOT to install a multi-use path and sidewalk on Project U4900, Murchison Road Widening from south of Pamley Drive to the Fayetteville Outer Loop.
I second that, Mayor.
I think I had a second by light of Mr. Cullington. Councilmember Hare, so he can...
I'll let him have that.
All right, so, we have the Waddell Cullington motion to accept and approve the resolution of support. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes.
That's good.
Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. All right, Item 6.013, Ms. Jensen. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask Deputy Manager Bauer to come up and tell everybody the wonderful news that we have going on with our skateboard park that we have so patiently waited for, so our public can understand what's going on in our timeline.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I am the real Christoph Bauer, Deputy City Manager. And what you have before you tonight is a design-build contract with basically three members, Alpha Builders, who is a local general contractor, Team Payne, who is a national design builder of skate parks out of Florida, and CLH, which is an engineering and design firm, and they're coming together to do a design-build contract to build a new skate park in Roan Park. They're asking for your approval to authorize the manager to sign that, so we can get moving forward with the design process and hope to be able to have this thing under construction this summer, so it can actually open up this fall and be operational.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer.
All right. Did have a question, and how long did you say the estimated time of construction?
We hope to complete it by this fall.
Okay, pretty aggressive. Councilmember Chris?
Mr. Bauer, please explain to our viewers and our citizens where the money is coming from to pay for the skateboard park, please.
Sure. This is one of the projects that was identified by council and we took to the community as part of the recreation bond package, so it's out of that $35 million package that's approved by the community back in 2016.
In other words, it was approved by the citizens?
Absolutely.
That we build a skateboard park?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I can?
Councilmember Jensen?
I would like to make a motion that we award the design-build contract to Team Payne for construction of the skateboard park located in Roan Street Park by the Parks and Rec Bond.
All right, there is a motion by Councilmember Jensen, there's a second by Councilmember Cullington.
I happily second that motion.
Sir?
Happily second that motion.
Yeah, you're quick on the trigger tonight, so. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Great project. Look forward to it. Madam Clerk, that is also unanimous. Motion carries. All right. Item 7.01, reports from the Unified Development Ordinance or the UDO Task Force Committee, City General. You have your team, your troops with you tonight. You'd like to handle introductions?
Good team, too. Good team.
I would. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, I'm Ale Cocker. Over the past year, I've been honored to serve with a dedicated Assembly of fellow citizens who are pointed to review two of the nine sections of the Unified Development Ordinance, Section 30-5 Development Standards and Section 30-7 Nonconformities. I'd like to mention the names of those who served on the UDO Task Force, starting with those who are here, Ms. Lori Epler, Mr. Dino Hondros, and Mr. John Malzone. In addition, we had Mr. Glenn Adams, Mr. David Guy, Mr. John McCaulley, Ms. Christine Michaels, Ms. Evelyn Shaw along with Dr. Riggins, who served part of the tour that Mr. Hondros also filled out. All of them served our city with dignity and with a devotion of much time and effort. You've already approved much of the work from the UDO Task Force, and more is coming to you through the Planning Commission for review in the future. Tonight, we submit for the record our recommended updates to those sections of the UDO that we reviewed. We offer sincere thanks to the members of the Fayetteville City staff who provide significant support to the UDO Task Force over the past year. Their collective knowledge and experience was exceptionally helpful in ensuring that our recommendations were based on facts, logic, and an understanding of the original ordinance intent. In many cases, the city staff volunteered to take on many of the administrative and clarity changes that the UDO Task Force recommended so that it keep us focused on more significant updates. The emphasis within the city staff on improved customer service is very commendable. It's important to help citizens understand the UDO and all the other Sydney ordinances and the possibility of flexibility when conditions warrant a review. As a group, the UDO Task Force encourages continuing this customer service emphasis. Very special thanks to the City Council mentors, Mr. Hare and Mr. Dawkins. Their dedicated interaction with the UDO Task Force was greatly appreciated and was key to the work that was accomplished with the well-being of our community in mind. During the past year, several City Council members also attended a number of our working sessions. We sincerely hope that your attendance at those sessions served to give you the confidence that our group was diverse in background, spirited in debate, and well-meaning in the efforts to recommend improvements to the UDO for the betterment of our community. All of us on the UDO Task Force would like to thank the Mayor for giving us the opportunity to serve and trusting us, even as we were learning to work together as a group early in our initial sessions. We certainly proved the old adage about a group growth is storming, forming, norming, and performing. We hope that seeing a group as diverse and engaging as the UDO Task Force working together will serve as a small reference point where we can all accomplish together as a city for the future. As with all recommendations from an appointed board, the members of the UDO Task Force understand that while many will be pleased that a group of citizens have provided what we believe are reasonable and responsible recommendations for your review, we also understand there will be those who believe the efforts need to go farther, and there will be those who believe the efforts went too far. That is as it should be in a democratic community, and we encourage all of our citizens to be more involved with local government. On a personal note, I consider it an honor to have worked with each member of the UDO Task Force, the city staff, the city council, and the Mayor. Our hope is that Fayetteville will be the best Fayetteville it can be. It can be important to find best practices from other cities. It can be important to set goals that have worked in other places. It's equally, and perhaps more, important to claim our own place in the future of the state of North Carolina. In deepest respect for the vision of my friend, Mayor Hurley, we've gone from Hurley Pots to Hurley Plaza. We've gone from the 500 block of Hay Street to the Airborne Special Operations Museum. I'm sure that we have many more challenges. I'm equally sure that we have many more opportunities to bring all those in Fayetteville to a more beautiful and economically viable city. We hope the citizens of Fayetteville continue to work together to be the best Fayetteville that we can be. Thank you.
General Acock, thank you. So, we did have a couple of questions. Oh, okay, so let me catch these questions, I'll circle back to you. So, Councilmember Hare?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to also seek to make a motion, but first, just want to just thank the General and all of the volunteers that worked on our commission, our UDO commission, and we worked very well together with the volunteers, our commissioners, and our staff. So, thank you again for the final report. I hope that it's not over. Still much more work to do, but thank you, guys. We did a very good job. Thank you all for serving.
Thank you. Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, General, for your leadership. Now, the report, is it my understanding correct that it now will be reviewed by the Planning Commission? That may be a question for Deputy City Manager Bauer or City Manager Hewitt.
I see Madam Attorney pressed her light. Oh, all right.
He's always wanting to be a lawyer, I believe.
No, not an attorney. No, maybe an accountant, but not an attorney. Based on the Mayor's direction, what will happen next is that we will bring this back to council at your June 3 work session. The council members will take the recommendations from tonight, along with the ones which you were presented with earlier, which have not already gone through the Planning Commission process, and the council members will then prioritize those and decide which ones will go first, which ones might go second, or which ones, after you've had a chance to review these recommendations, you may say it's not time for yet. So, the council will be in full control, and that will happen at June 3, and then we will start running those through the Planning Commission process with staff recommendations and all the way back up to City Council to conclude that. Did I state that correctly, Mayor?
That sounds correct to me, yes, sir. So...
I did have some more questions.
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you. I also wanted to thank Councilmember Hare for his diligence and his suggestions, and as I said months ago, sometime we didn't agree on everything, but that's the way it's supposed to be, because if you have folks that learn to work together and work through their issues, we get a great product. General Acock, you have been very involved in the community, prior Garrison Commander, I think the longest-serving Garrison Commander that I can remember in my lifetime. Would you care to comment on where you go from here, your next position? I'd like the public to know the value that you're going to be bringing to Fort Bragg and other installations across the country.
So, as you know, Mr. Dawkins, I was serving as a senior executive civilian at the John D. F. Kennedy Special Warfare Center and School, a job that I truly loved, and the Army has had a housing crisis come upon us, and partnership seems to need a little work, and I was asked by one of the partners to come and work for them and help assist with making sure that that problem is moved forward in the right way. I feel like it's a calling that I can go and help the entire Army, and so I've taken on a new position with the Corvius Company that has the housing here at Fort Bragg and 12 other installations around the area to make sure that the soldiers and civilians who live out on our posts get the right kind of care and the right kind of service, and I'm very honored to continue serving the Army in a different way.
Thank you, General. I appreciate you explaining that to our citizens, because what you do is very valuable, what you've learned at Fort Bragg, you've been able to take to other posts around the country, and I think Seymour Johnson Air Force Base will now be in your purview, so, along with other locations. And, Mr. Mayor, this is a big deal. General Acock was the Deputy Commander of U.S. Army Installation Management Command, and he has been able to bring best practices to Fort Bragg and improve the quality of life for our soldiers and our airmen, and what we want, Mr. Mayor, to happen is those families to enjoy their time at Fort Bragg and Pope and come back and retire here, because they're valuable assets, and we're happy to have them. Thank you, General Acock. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, all right. Thank you, Councilmember Dawkins. You know, when we put this committee together, I tried to use a diverse group of different opinions, that people were extreme to support the existing document, and people were extreme that it should be changed, and I tried to find a few in the middle, and so General Acock described it best. He said it was like a combustible engine, that the first few meetings were very dynamic and combustible, but he was able to harness that direction to produce a great product. This is an extensive document. I heard it say two of nine chapters and maybe 900 pages, 900 paragraphs, 700 pages, and they only were able to take off a certain portion of it, but it came out with, what, 30 or 40 recommendations that the council now has to make some policy decisions. Staff will vet these recommendations to make sure that in the June 3 work session, we are able to have the best information from a staff perspective, as well as from this citizen professional group. So, General Acock, this is vital, too, how we change our community. This is a moving, living, breathing document that we know is not perfect. It will not be perfect at the end of this, but we ask that the citizens will just respect the processes as we continue to make the changes that are best for the city. So, thank you for what you're doing. We look forward to this, June 3, taking another slice at this, and the council continuing to make progress in the community. So, with that, I will give way to Councilmember Hare for action.
Yes, sir, Mayor. I would like to make a motion that we accept the United Development Ordinance, the UDO Task Force, from the General tonight.
So, I have a motion by the two liaisons that kept the council abreast as what was going on, Councilmember Hare and Dawkins. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. General, thank you. Thank you for your service. Good luck on your new career. Thank you.
Credit to these folks.
Credit to these folks.
All right, item 8.0, Public Hearings. Individuals desiring to speak at the public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before 7:00 p.m. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of each of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by a previous arrangement a single spokesperson has been designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire 15 minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. You may then address the city council. When the light changes from green to amber, it means you have 30 seconds remaining. At the end of your allotted time, the buzzer will ring. At this time, we have our manager, Mr. Doug Hewitt, first in line.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It is, again, a pleasure to be with you, to be covering over the FY 2020 Recommended Budget. As you said, sir, this is a public hearing, and tonight, we have, I think so far, Madam Clerk, two speakers signed up, and so, in the interest of allowing the public to speak on the budget, I will go through this, but I, of course, always, as always, take your questions, any that you might have. The city manager's recommended budget was released to the city council on May 2, and we presented it formally in this chamber on May 13. The document as well has been available for public review in the office of the city clerk and on the city's website. As in years past, we have tried to orient this year's proposed budget for FY 2020 around the council's six goals, and those are: Goal 1, Safe and Secure Community; Goal 2, Diverse and Viable Economy; Goal 3, High Quality Built Environment; Goal 4, A Desirable Place to Live, Work, and Recreate; 5, Sustainable Organizational Capacity; and finally, Goal 6, Resident Engagement and Partnerships. In addition to those goals, each year, the city council meets in either January or February and helps clarify their work plan for the upcoming year, and this budget fully supports those, that work plan, and that work plan is generally called council's targets for action. And a few of the superlatives from those targets for action are on the screen in front of you. That includes a revitalization of Merkison Road Corridor, community revitalization efforts including residential and commercial properties, an update of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan to manage future growth, as well as development of a quality stormwater program, development of an internship program, smart city capacity through the pursuit of broadband access, improvements in railroad crossing safety at at-grade crossings, and elevating the conversations to combat poverty across the city, as well as the development of a young adult engagement program to promote collaboration and empowerment. And a little bit later in tonight's meeting, the council will be standing up, formerly the Millennial Council, which is, as you can see, one of council's targets for action already for next year, too. And so, a little bit into the numbers. Across all funds, the FY 2020 Proposed Budget is $228 million. The general fund, which takes up most of our attention, is $173 million. Environmental Services Fund is 14. Transit Fund is 10. Stormwater Fund is 11 million. The Airport Fund is 12. Public Works Assessment Fund is 2.2. The Law Enforcement Office's Separation Allowance, Oliosa, is 1.7 million. The E-911 Emergency Telephone System Fund is a little bit over a million. The Parking Fund, 1 million. Central Business Tax District, 290,000, and then the Lake Valley MSD, which is off of Scavo, is 82,500. And as you can see, the variances of the changes from FY 2019 adopted budget until the FY 2020 Proposed Budget. Some revenue highlights, and some of this, as council knows, has changed, but because the public will be commenting on the budget that has been made available to them online and was recommended by the manager and staff earlier in this month, the revenue highlights still remain the same, even though I will make changes to those on the next slide to highlight the direction that we've received from city council. The general property tax rate is proposed to remain the same at 49.95 cents per $100 of property valuation. The taxable property growth, as we described to the council, has grown moderately at about 1.6%. The Central Business Tax District, the tax rate is recommended to remain the same at 10 cents, and the Lake Valley Drive MSD or Municipal Service District, the tax rate is recommended to also remain the same at 39.4 cents. So, for the changes between the recommended budget and the direction that we've gotten from city council. One second. For FY 19, the current fee for solid waste fee is $190 per single-family residential unit, but in our conversations with council, the proposed increase of $1.25 per month or $15 per year has been removed, and we've rebalanced the budget as we showed and shared with the council last week. But again, because the public is commenting tonight on the budget that is online and was recommended by the manager and staff, we have left this slide in. But again, we have rebalanced the budget with no fee increase for solid waste. The stormwater fee, no changes proposed of the current fee, which is $6 per month per equivalent residential unit, and transit fares are also recommended to remain the same. However, the council did and has authorized staff to implement a reduced cost for semester passes for Fayetteville State University, Methodist University, and Fayetteville Technical Community College students. The next steps are, we're here tonight for a required public hearing on the budget. That was published, and the notice was published in the Fayetteville Observer on Thursday, May 16. We're to receive comments tonight through the public hearing, and then council is scheduled to hopefully adopt the budget, the CIP, the TIP Strategic Plan and Fee Schedule on Monday, June 10. And with that, sir, I'll be happy to answer any questions or turn it over to the public for the public hearing.
All right, so, at this time, I didn't see any lights. What we'll do is open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, if you could call your first speaker?
Yes, sir, we have two speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Chris Lizenby, speaking in favor.
Hello, council, my name is Chris Lizenby.
Is that your name and your address, sir?
I did, okay. Is it loud enough? Hello, council, my name is Chris Lizenby, at 3430 Drawdown Circle, Apartment 203, Fayetteville, North Carolina 28304. I have come today in regard to asking the city council to adopt a universal fee schedule for stormwater upgrades via PWC building. To, you know, improvements on upgrades for the stormwater. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Excuse me, Mayor. I didn't, I couldn't, I didn't really hear what he said.
Yeah, upgrades for stormwater and a universal fee.
At the PWC building?
Through billing.
Oh, through billing, okay, good, I didn't catch it all. All right, thank you, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Jerry Reinal, speaking in opposition.
Another budget year, and here we go again. Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the Fayetteville City Council, good evening. My name is Jerry Reinal, 516 Deer Path Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Previously, I voiced concern over the 40-plus percent planned increase the city of Fayetteville Cross Creek Cemetery burial, the Cross Creek Cemetery burial fees. You increased the fees, hundreds of pages of budget documentation, and I can't find any reference to city-owned cemetery revenue. Therefore, I recommend giving our poor a break on a small plot of city property and roll back burial fees to the old rates for their family members' final resting place. Concern with paid downtown parking options under consideration for Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Citizens probably don't want to pay for on-street parking to attend our local government public meetings like this one. The parking management contractor is the big winner digging into our wallets and only this, and the only smiling face of the entire downtown parking discussion. I urge caution on any additional downtown parking options. On the plus side, the, by failing to adopt a increase in the solid waste management fees, that's saving Fayetteville citizens about $913,000 for next year, so that's a good thing. Thank you.
Mayor, we have no further speakers for this item.
Okay, at this time, we will close the public hearing, and if you have any questions, I don't see any lights for city manager. All right. So, council, I don't think any action is required, this is a public hearing, to kinda get the public's input on the budget, so I'm sure we will have follow-up meeting to discuss, so. At this time, we'll move to item 8.02. Issuance of a special use permit to allow multifamily residential development. Hello?
I'm Sharon Williams, I am one of the senior planners in Development Services. The request that you have before you is a special use permit. Our applicant is Scott Brown, a professional engineer from 4D Site Solutions. They're asking for a special use permit to allow a multifamily townhouse development in the single-family 6 Residential Zoning District. The property is located at the intersection of Clifdale and Lowell Harris Road. It contains approximately 29 and a half acres. It is in Council District 7. Staff has recommended approval of the request, and the zoning commission also recommended approval.
Madam Clerk, did you need, you need to swear in?
I do, sir.
Okay. And how many speakers do you have signed up?
We have three speakers for this item. Mr. Scott Brown, Mr. Tim Evans, and Ms. Sarita Varsell.
You all come to the podium to be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is truthful?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, now we're legal.
Now, just to give you an indication of where we are on Clifdale Road, if we were looking to the north on Clifdale, this is our actual site, but to the north, just to orientate you, would be the Walmart and the Sunshine House Early Learning Academy. If we were going to the south down Clifdale, that's where we would find the Zaxby's, the Smithville BBQ, the IHOP, and the Fort Bragg Credit Union. So, just to give you some idea of where we are, and on Lowell Harris Road, it ends at one of the city's convenience centers.
One of the city's what?
Convenience centers. Thank you, Councilman Chris.
All right, that's nice.
The property is zoned SF6. That was a result of a rezoning request that came before city council in 2011. It was rezoned from agricultural residential to SF6, and during that meeting, there was some discussion that the property may potentially be developed for, for multifamily use. The SF6 zoning district does permit multifamily townhouse dwellings, provided that a special use permit is approved by city council. A special use permit requirement is something that is in our UDO, and it just means that in a particular zoning district, the use may be appropriate, but because of its nature or location, it requires special consideration in terms of designs. Here we have the city's land use map. The city's land use map does recommend low-density residential, which is the yellow bordered by multi, excuse me, medium-density residential, which is the burnt orange color that we see here. If we were to go further to the east as the crow flies, we have another grouping of multifamily developments along Clifdale Road. Here, we're just giving you a subject view of the property from Clifdale and Lowell Harris Road, and also views to the east-west and Lowell Harris Road and Quail Meadow Drive. So, let's discuss the project a little more in detail. What they are looking to do is to build a 32-building townhouse development. Each building would have between four and seven units. Amenities on the site are proposed to include a playground, clubhouse, pool, and tennis court. The property would be accessed off of Lowell Harris. This is Clifdale Road here, but it would be accessed off of Lowell Harris. NC DOT has denied access from Clifdale Road, but there would be two entrances on Lowell Harris into the proposed gated development. Our Unified Development Ordinance does encourage multifamily be located in front of existing single-family, therefore, it allows the multifamily users to enter and exit without going through the residential existing neighborhood. At this time, we can tell you that in discussions that we've had with DOT and city engineering, that this does not warrant a traffic study, however, additional measures may be required in terms of a right-turn lane onto Lowell Harris, which would be a requirement of NC DOT, and then the city may require some upgrades to Lowell Harris as part of the development. The proposed development will be townhouses, each with a garage, and there will also be a patio located to the rear of each unit. And we've also just provided a small and large view, just so that you could see the grouping of the townhomes. Now, as we've gone throughout this process, there have been some concerns raised by the neighborhood in terms of flooding and stormwater. This issue has been referred to public services, and they are currently reviewing the information that they have received. At the April 9, at the April 9 meeting, the zoning commission did recommend approval of the project by a vote of 3 to 2. At that meeting, the commissioners expressed some of the same concerns that the neighbors had in terms of traffic and flooding. After that meeting, we recommended to the developer that they hold a neighborhood meeting, and that meeting was held here in council chambers on the 13th of May. They met to discuss some of the ongoing issues. Excuse me, that, I'm sorry, that meeting happened on May the 2nd, not the 13th. On the 13th, staffs still had, been contemplating the issues raised by the neighbors and the issues raised in zoning commission, and we did ask to meet with the developer and their engineer, and that meeting occurred on the 13th of May. At that meeting, we came to an agreement that they would reduce the number of proposed townhomes from 220 to 210. They achieved that by... They achieved that by removing one building at the rear of the property for each of the eight units here, and then they also removed two units along Clifdale. So this would provide a greater buffer between, um, the existing Clifdale Forest subdivision and the proposed King, Kingsley Park Townhouse Development. It's, we also requested that they reduce the required amount of parking, and they have reduced that by sixty-eight spaces. And we also informed them that additional stormwater measures may be required as part of the site development. Conceptually, this is what the development would look like. We have certain facade requirements that we require for multifamily dwellings. Typically, it, um, applies to those developments that actually, those parts of the development that face a public street. In this case, we have asked that the development standards be applied site-wide and not just to, um, the units that can be seen from Clifdale or Lowell Harris. We have recommended, as staff, approval of the special use permit with conditions. We made a recommendation based on the fact that the multifamily townhouse use is consistent with the underlying zoning. Again, the SF six does allow multifamily with a special use permit. The preliminary plans that we've seen have shown that the developer could meet the underlying, um, density for zoning, uh, parking, and open space requirements for the proposed use. Now, let me just clarify one thing. Under zoning, they would meet the, the density. Zoning would allow, just by regular right, if a special use were not involved, two-hundred-and-fifty-seven units. Um, it would allow two-hundred-and-fourteen single-family homes by right. Now again, this doesn't account for road or wetlands or floodplain, anything that would need to, uh, come out. Um, however, our land use recommendation for low-density residential is up to six dwelling units per acre. Right now, where we're at is about seven, so consistent with zoning and just slightly above the two-thousand-and-ten land use recommendation. The development is subject to the review of the city's technical review team as well as the Department of Transportation. That will include access, road improvements, lighting, and landscaping. And we do not believe that there are any factors which will substantially affect public health, safety morals, or general welfare. Um, as I said earlier, the zoning commission did recommend approval with conditions. We have at, since that time, modified, um, those conditions. The first condition that we would like, um, council to make part of this request, if it is approved, is that it be developed substantially in accordance with the preliminary site plan that you saw this evening, that the exterior facades of the building shall be developed substantially as shown on the elevation plan that I showed, that color rendering. We're going to ask that a type-D buffer be installed along all residentially-zoned property. As you may recall, our type-D buffer is our most stringent buffer, which requires all landscaping or combination of fencing and landscaping. The developer, at their expense, shall install speed humps on Lowell Wood Ro- Lowell Harris Road between Quail Meadow Drive and Pleasant Oak Drive. An application was submitted to the city for the speed humps. It was approved by the city. However, in order for the city to install the speed humps, we would have needed a petition signed by all of the property owners sent back to us. The people that made the initial request could not gather all of the signatures, but since the neighbors have expressed that they are still interested in this, the developer has agreed to install them, pay for it, and it will be done under the city's guidelines. The developer will be required to meet a higher drainage standard as determined by our city engineer. And they have agreed with that, to that, and that would come during the site plan approval process. What we're going to ask is that, in order to blend with the existing residents, residences that are there, we do ask that design standards be applicable to the development, and we've listed those designs there for you. That building facades shall incorporate offsets in the form of projections or recesses in the facade plane, a minimum of thirty feet of, of each thirty feet of the building wall. The offsets shall have a minimum depth of two feet, and they shall have, um, four of the different features that we have here. And if we go back to that elevation drawing, that's what they're showing there. They're showing that they would be able to meet those requirements. So for that, we have, um, recommended approval, and I'm available for any questions that you might have.
All right, council, if you, uh, push your buttons again if you had, uh, questions that we'll, we'll open the public hearing and close it, and then I'll return to questions. The light was off. All right, you had quite a few lights. And Coleman. All right. Thank you, ma'am. Go too far. I'm sure you'll have, we have a lot to talk about.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Ms. Attorney?
Mayor, it might be, uh, best to, uh, hear from the, uh, speakers, and then, once you've heard from the speakers, that may answer some of the questions, uh, that council has. But if not, then entertain questions.
Yes, ma'am, that was the plan. I had my gavel ready to go. All right, so with that, we'll open the public hearing. Uh, Madam Clerk, let me call your first speaker.
Mayor, our first speaker is Mr. Scott Brown.
Mr. Mayor, council members. Uh, Scott Brown, four oh nine Chicago Drive, Suite one-twelve, Fayetteville. I am, as, uh, Ms. Sharon mentioned, the in- civil engineer for the project, also the applicant for the project. We were, we've worked together with staff. We were at the planning commission meeting, had several questions, and, uh, had comments come up, had several speakers, uh, a few for, mostly against at the, uh, planning commission meeting. There's, uh, one speaker signed up against it tonight, it's my understanding. Uh, Sharon went over a lot of the issues that were discussed during the planning commission meeting. As a result of the planning commission meeting, we did have a neighborhood meeting in, into the project, a neighborhood meeting that was not required, but one that we felt was probably necessary based on the planning commission meeting and based on comments from staff. Uh, we had a few come out. It's my understanding you have a copy of the summary in your packet along with the sign-in sheet. We had about seven or eight, uh, a few couples that came out and asked questions during the, uh, during the neighborhood meeting. Uh, hope, hopefully, we answered a few of those questions because it's my understanding that was, we don't have, uh, only one sign up to speak here against it tonight. But we are requesting a conditional use permit for two-hundred-and-ten townhomes, as mentioned. Uh, by right, two-hundred-and-fourteen single-family homes are allowed with a SF six zoning, uh, meaning that we don't have to come before city council, we don't have to come before planning commission. We just have to go before staff and follow the UDO and gets, and gets, uh, go through TRC, and we could put two-hundred-and-fourteen townhomes out there today. And based on the zero lot line, we could maximize the density of those two-hundred-and-fourteen townhomes, modifying the lot size to be able to fit them on the, on the property. We originally proposed two-hundred-and-twenty townhomes. We did back that off based on the neighborhood meeting and based on meeting with staff. It will allow it to two-hundred-and-fifty-seven. So we're actually, if you were to move forward and approve this conditional use permit, we'd, you'd be approving a plan that would limit you to four less units than what you would have on a single-family development where you would have zero control. So what, that's what we're asking the council for here tonight is to take a look at it, look at what we're offering as far as the, not only the amenities, but you've got a gated community, uh, that you would not have as a part of a single-family, uh, townhome, what you do. So what we're looking at is a diff, not just a straight-up conditional use plan, but the difference between single-family and that two-hundred-and-ten units that we are proposing. We have reduced the parking, uh, there, each unit does have a garage, but most garages today, and I can speak especially for myself, I have a two-car garage, and I can fit a car in it. Most of it's for storage, and I imagine most of these will be for storage too. So you could take two-hundred-and-ten, uh, parking spaces off of that total count there and get a more realistic number as far as actual parking, because most people will more than likely use those garages for, uh, park, I mean, for storage. Traffic was a big issue. We have, uh, discussed back and forth with city traffic as well as DOT. Uh, the traffic is going to be an issue whether you have two-hundred-and-ten townhomes or whether you have two-hundred-and-fourteen single-family homes. DOT currently is not allowing connection to Clifdale Road as Sharon, uh, uh, pointed out, but, uh, we're not going to stop there as discussed during the, uh, neighborhood meeting. I'm going to continue to push DOT, use whatever strings I have, whatever, whatever, who, whatever connections I have to see if I can get DOT to change their mind. It's my feeling if we can get a ride out on the Clifdale Road, we will eliminate, uh, alleviate a lot of the, the traffic burden that's on Lowell Harris now, especially that we generated from this project here. And, uh, we have agreed to, uh, there was an S on humps a while ago, but you have such a short distance between Quail Meadow and Pleasant Oak Drive, you're only going to get one speed hump in there. So we have agreed after talking with city traffic to install the one speed hump. DOT is requiring the right turn lane off of Clifdale Road onto Lowell Harris. No turn signal at this time. City traffic has not weighed in a hundred percent. They'll make their comments once the project moves forward, if it moves forward, and we'll work that out at that point in time. I know, another big issue was stormwater. Uh, I understand a lot of the residents that came out during the neighborhood meeting and even during the planning commission expressed problems with stormwater. There's a creek on the north side of this property and that has flooding problems now uh, from, uh, DOT, from the Clifdale widening, from the existing neighborhood, as, as you are aware. Whenever a lot of that stuff was constructed, it was before stormwater ordinance was in place. And as I mentioned, at the planning commission meeting as well as at the neighborhood meeting, nothing we can do on this project is going to stop the flooding issues that those people are having now. We cannot fix, we didn't create it, and we cannot fix it. The only thing we can do as part of this project is to ensure that it does not get any worse than what it's getting now. What they're experiencing is a result of upstream development and probably downstream, uh, maintenance, uh, needs, if, probably if the streams was cleaned out, the waterways was cleaned out, may not experience it quite as much. But I also understand we've been through a similar situation where it was a down, uh, drainage-sensitive areas where city staff has recommended above and beyond what the stormwater ordinance requires. We complied with that on other projects. We will comply with it on this project. We'll work that out with city, with, uh, city engineering staff. Uh, we're not sure exactly what that storm event is yet because we've not been told by staff, but we will work with staff to, to make those, uh, make those arrangements. Uh, just real quick, want to make sure I go over everything I have here for you. Like I said, again, the key here, in my opinion, is the two-hundred-and-ten units versus two-hundred-and-fourteen. I know that, uh, we discussed during, uh, the joint session with city staff about trying to reduce that even further. Uh, but there's, there's a cost associated with these improvements, a cost associated with the amenities and all that we're going, we're going to be putting up. And, uh, my client felt that the two-hundred-and-ten units was about as low as they could go to be able to still make this thing economically viable. And so what we're asking for here tonight from, from city, uh, council is that follow the recommendation of staff, follow the recommendation of the planning commission. Uh, we have made strides in the fact that we, like I said, we went down from all the speakers that was opposed for it in the, uh, planning commission, the speakers that came out during the neighborhood meeting, down to one, uh, one speaker that's against it tonight. And if I recall correctly from looking at the name, that, uh, same speaker that's against it tonight was also at the neighborhood meeting, so they can discuss and tell with you what they had. And I'm sure that the city council may have questions and comments, and I'll be glad to answer those either at this time or at some point in the future whenever this public hearing concludes.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, don't get too far. We've got several lights, uh, so we'll be calling you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Tim Evans, also speaking in favor.
Mr. Mayor, city council and staff, my name is Tim Evans, forty-two, thirty-nine Cameron Road, and owner of Longleaf Properties. I'm representing the two sisters, Mary Frances Conley, who's with us tonight at eighty-four years old, and her sister Virginia, who is an invalid due to a severe car crash approximately eleven years ago. I'd like to touch a little bit on the history of the Harris property on Clifdale Road, which goes back many, many, many years. Their mother lost her house to the widening of Clifdale around the year two thousand and actually moved in across the street at King's Mill on Cherry Cross Lane and lived there four years before they had to put her into a rest home. And her sister, that's an invalid, lives approximately a half a mile from this current site. The reason I'm mentioning this, this family has watched the growth of Clifdale Road their entire lives, and they have never been in opposition to the growth of Clifdale Road. I'm sure all of you know Clifdale Road, from the four oh one down to Riley Road. This section is just one mass of residential, and it has its share of commercial. One thing I would like to make, uh, to the city council is this. I was instrumental in the large development at the end of Rim Road, almost at Clifdale, which ended up being four-hundred-and-fifty units in two phases. If you go by that project today, it's as neat and clean as it was when it was put in. What I'm saying is this, in fairness to the family and to the city council. I believe if I lived in the subdivision across the street or behind it, with the nature of these townhouses being gated, landscaped, and that traffic coming out of it on to Clifdale by Lowell Harris is not going to affect them. My day-to-day job is more residential than multifamily. I have been involved in a lot of multifamilies. When we had the big project on Clifdale and Rim, the newer subdivision, we had opposition, and their main concern was crime. I went before the city police department, as well as I did this time, and looked at the crime of townhouses or apartment complexes compared to single-family, and you'd be astounded that it's really just petty stuff. It's, I mean, there's not a lot of crime in those. And I would say it would be a fair venture to say these townhouses would really create less traffic than families buying single-family with teenagers, where we know today the average family might have three or four cars. And I think it'd be fair to say townhouses were really catering to as, probably more single or couples than, you know, families. So when we look at this development on a corner, and I'm not trying to degrade subdivisions, but in every subdivision I'm involved in, here comes the privacy fences, and in four to five years, they look like Hades. So with this corridor on Clifdale Road, and the city really trying to improve its image, there are townhouses already on Clifdale. There are apartment complexes on Clifdale Road. I believe, in my opinion, that it's a fit for this family. I mean, for the selling of this property for it. This family has never, ever went against anything on Clifdale Road. This small farm was divided by the road. And one last thought is this, the Gillis's farm, this approximate thirty acres. David Gillis told me that it would be his last year farming it because of getting big farm equipment to that last track left on Clifdale Road. And my last statement is this, in fairness to our opposition, I think it's fair, none of us like change. And if I've lived in a home backed up to a field for thirty or forty years, thinking that it's never going to be developed, and then here comes a development. We knew it was a matter of time before this We knew it was a matter of time before this would happen. What would you had rather have, a housing development or the townhouses with great buffer and fencing? So I think the trueness here is this. I got so many calls when I put a sign up on this property, "You know we're going to fight you if it's commercial." I said, "It's not going to be the commercial. The city's already told me they won't allow commercial." I've had churches calling and everything you can imagine calling. But I'm of the opinion as a broker, and all I have is my integrity is this. I think that piece of property at thirty acres within Holland distance of four oh one, we know the traffics there. I mean, it's horrendous, we know that. But I think it would be well-suited for townhouses. Thank you so much, and I'm open for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our final speaker is Ms. Sarita Varsel, speaking in opposition.
Hello. My name is Sarita Varsel, and I live at nine sixty-two Sanchez Drive, right behind the field. I've lived there for twenty years, and I understand where he's coming from about not wanting to develop and not wanting change. And I get that, and I do have some concerns as far as the change goes. However, a lot of our concerns aren't just the field being developed. It's not my property. I can't say what they can or can't do with it, and I don't want to tell them what they can or can't do with it. But I do want to make sure that anything that is put there is not making my house flood worse. I had to deal with just fifteen minutes of rain and ended up with the creek line being way higher than it should be. And it does, and the creek line does run down the property line for the proposed development. And the, just thanking Ms. Sharon and Mr. Brown for talking about the changes that they're going to be making. We weren't expecting that, and I do appreciate that immensely. The biggest things, again, is just making sure that the, the drainage is adequate, that it doesn't end up in the creek line and making it worse. Now, as far as traffic goes, I'm not going to lie. Lowell Harris is a little two-lane road. It's not very big at all. We have, because of the dump at the end of the street of Lowell Harris, we end up with, you know, it's not uncommon for, for big trucks to be coming through. It's not uncommon for people using the waste site. As a matter of fact, according to the DOT traffic volume map, Lowell Harris gets about thirteen hundred cars per day. Beverly, which is the other street in the Clifdale Forest subdivision, gets twenty-four hundred a day. And Clifdale Road between Hoakaloope and Rayford is about twelve thousand a day. So by putting in these extra homes, it will increase the traffic area in that. My concern is making, getting out, turning right, not a problem. Turning left, that's a problem. It's not safe. You've got traffic coming, you've got other subdivisions since they put the medians in having to make U-turns at Lowell Harris. So it's just a matter of trying to make sure the area stays safe. You know, like I said, I've been there for twenty years. I don't want it to get anywhere, it, it, it is my home. My babies were raised there. I don't want it to get to a point where we feel pushed out because we're not, our, our concerns are not taken seriously. Thank you. I appreciate the time, and if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to help try and answer them.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
So with that, we'll close the public hearing and begin questions. Ms. Attorney?
Mayor, this is quasi-judicial, so you need to leave the public hearing open during the question portion as well.
Got you. We will reopen it then. Thank you, ma'am. All right. We have several questions, and I'll start out, if we could have Mr. Brown, if you could. Mr. Brown, so a couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
Um, I heard you say that, that basically the way it's zoned, you could put more units than you could if, if we-
Than what we're proposing.
Sir?
Than what we're proposing, yes, sir.
So if, if that's the case, why are you going for a special use permit?
Look, we, my client chose to do townhome versus single-family. She wants to use this as an investment property. She's not going to sell it. It's going to be property she's going to secure in, so she's going to use it as rental property and as being, it's, it's a, it's owned and it's not being sold. So it's going to be maintained, it should be looking good. But she felt that the townhomes were a better fit. She's got other townhomes in the community and felt there was a greater need for that than would be the, just, just typical single-family house.
So as it is, you could not do that, is what you're saying?
As it is what?
As it is currently.
SF six will allow for two hundred and fourteen single-family townhomes. Yes, sir. My client has no desire to build single-family townhomes there at this time. They would prefer to do the townhomes versus the single-family traditional subdivision house. And as such, because we're doing townhomes, it would be considered multifamily. That's what triggers the conditional use permit.
So when you say in single-family townhomes, you mean just single-family units?
Yes, sir.
Versus multifamily units?
Yes, sir.
So you can't do multifamily units the way it's currently zoned? So you're not able to do what you wanted to do without city council input?
That's correct.
You have to go this route?
That's correct.
That's the part I was trying to get to.
Yes, sir. We have, we have to have your approval in order to put these townhomes in.
To make it multifamily.
Yes, sir.
And what is, so I see that you had, you proposed to put about eight hundred parking spaces.
Yes, sir.
How is that not going to, all that impervious surface not going to impact the amount of water that runs off of that property?
It will, most definitely. I mean, the more impervious you put on there, the more water you're going to have running off of it, the less, the less you have available for open space or open, open, open conveyance. We have reduced the amount of parking spaces from the initial two hundred and twenty units that were proposed to now. But as in most apartment complexes, like I said, my client has other apartment complexes, townhome communities throughout the city, and one shortage that we have is parking. Whether you have a, most, most, if it's, if it's set up for these townhomes, if, let's say a family of three comes in, they're going to have, they're going to have three vehicles, or the average family's now is what, three points something? And, and each, everybody's going to have a Sunday ride or whatever else, and you have a buddy or two come over. You're quickly running out of parking. We had, we've got another one off of Fisher Road, a similar type development, and we had to go back in after the fact and add parking because we put the amount of parking in that's listed in the UDO, but it was short. There's people parking on the street, parking everywhere else. And because the way this is set up in a, in a single-family detached subdivision, if you have extra people, well, they'll just park on the side of the street. Well, that's, this, this community's not set up this way. You don't have, you don't have houses directly in front of the streets, so there's no street-side parking available. So we wanted to go provide adequate parking so that we didn't have the situation where you had people blocking the roads, people blocking the access drives, and we felt like this was needed in order to be able to satisfy the needs of that particular-
Well, yeah, no, I'm not questioning why you need the number of parking spaces. What I'm questioning is, your statement that said that you didn't have, you didn't create the flooding problem.
That's correct.
What you're doing is not going to impact the flooding problem. So I'm trying to get you to explain that I understand how you can add that much impervious parking to accommodate eight hundred cars and not impact the amount of water that runs off that property.
That's the, if you look at the, your proposed site plan on the northern end of it there, that's where the existing creek that runs through. And that's talking about, this creek is impacted by the Clifdale widening, by the neighborhood. And that's also, we're proposing our stormwater solution, that pond area. And I would imagine right now, the, the stormwater ordinance has a requirement that the post-development runoff from a construction site has got to be less than or equal to the pre-development runoff for a ten-year storm event. And I know that the city, city engineering is going to go above and beyond that. I don't know how far above and beyond that. But that stormwater measure will, as, as what you see there, could increase depending on what that requirement is. And the more impervious you have, the bigger that stormwater event, that stormwater measure has to be to control that storm event. Now, that's, we're going to retain it over a period of time and slow release it. So that's, the water's going somewhere, it's going to go downhill, as, as water does go downhill. We can't capture and hold it forever. But as the requirement, stormwater ordinance, we will capture and hold it for a period of two to five days so we're ready for the next rain event that comes in. So that rain event will be released at a rate at its current, so that it does not exceed its current rate. So that's, that's the reason I said, we can't fix the problem that they're having now, but we won't add to it in a certain, but if you have a hurricane event, let's say we have another Florence or another Matthew comes through. I don't care what nobody puts out there unless they size it for some magn, magnanimous event that most people can't do anyway.
Yeah, I get, I get that. But concrete will not allow the water to go in where, like it is now, it goes.
That's correct. It, it will, it will, whatever, we're going to get whatever benefit we have by the, by the open areas. And then what we don't collect, capture in the open areas will be captured in the storm pond, and it'll be hailed over that period of two to five days. And it will be slow released into that creek. There's nowhere else for it to go.
Right. Which leads me to my last point.
Yes, sir.
Now, I'll give way to my council member. So the creek that was pointed out, where is that on this property here?
It's on the northern edge between, if you see that Erica Road on the, on the left side of the paper, there's, there's a drawl that comes through. If you can picture Clifdale Road running across the bottom of the paper, where if you could extend it out, if you look at it on, in your vicinity map, you can see it. But it runs, and I'd be glad to point it out to you if you, if I'm allowed to get there and point it out to you.
Well, I'm, I'm checking. You can use the, the mouse on there.
Okay. Pond is sitting here. The creek runs along that property line to the northern, north side of that pond, and it continues to run the property line. And I think the, the lady that spoke a few minutes ago is somewhere down in this area here. She's downstream of it. So she gets, she gets the full impact of, of everything upstream, plus the ramifications of the people downstream not cleaning their drains well.
With that being said, and you, you've just articulated that your, your, even your retention process will release this water into the creek.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So on a heavy rain event, the creek will probably rise if it hadn't been, I mean, it would probably rise depending on how much rain comes and how quick and, and if the creek's been maintained or cleaned out and so forth. So when that happens, how do you know that that process won't impact those people that are downstream?
Only thing I can, I can tell you is that we will comply with the stormwater guidelines. It's going to be above and beyond what we're at now. I, I'm not going to sit there and tell you up and jump up and down and say they're never going to see anymore because once we get past that event, let's say the city says we got to do a twenty-five-year event versus a ten-year event. Well, they're in a, they're in a thirty-year event or thirty-five-year event, they're going to see more. Yes, they're going to see more. But I can tell you that based on the methodology and approved practices of engineering and stormwater management, that for any event less than the event that we're treating up to will not make any additional impact to the creek. Because that's what, that's the buffering that that stormwater pond will-
So the event that you planned for-
Yes, sir.
Won't have any additional impact.
No, sir. That event and less.
You don't plan for will have impact. So it's not totally accurate to say that you won't add to the problem and those kinds of things.
Above and beyond circumstances, it could. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. All right. At this time, council member Arp and then Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up, Mr. Brown, to that question. The rate of flow of water leaving that property permeable versus unpermeable.
Yes, sir.
It's still got to be the same according to stormwater regulation.
Yes, sir.
And so the, the actual rate of the amount of water discharging off that property into the creek, that's why they have to put the stormwater measures in. Now, i- in the event of a twenty-five, thirty-year, fifty-year event, the amount of water coming off that property impermeable, permeable, is still going to be significant to cause the flooding, right? Because once the ground's saturated, it's saturated.
That's correct. And I mean, it's flooding today. So I mean, what, I mean, we're not going to control that. If you would never do anything to that piece of property again, these, these people are downstream are going to have the same problems that they have today. And at some point in time, somebody's going to come in there, whether it's a detached, single-family subdivision that puts it in by the SF six zoning by rights, or whether you have somebody like me standing up before you. At some point in time, we all know growth is going to occur. And what, what we're, we're tasked with is what you're tasked with as city officials. What I'm tasked with as an engineer is to control that growth and to regulate it to the point where we're not degrading our, our, our natural environment or endangering our downstream neighbor. And so that's, that's, that's my job. And that city staff's job is to put those regulations in place, and my job is design it accordance to them. And I can tell you that whatever those requirements are, if, if they say you're going to do a fifty-year event, that pond's going to have to, that pond's, pond's going to have to grow. It can make some minor modification. You have to start deleting stuff to try to fit it in there. But I will tell you that we will do, we'll comply with whatever the city comes up with. If it gets to the point and says, if it gets too big, well, we just can't do it. The project just won't work. But just because you approve it tonight don't mean that when it's all said and done, this thing's going to go forward. This is the first step of meaning that we're going to have to take in order to make-
So Mr. Brown, I don't mean to cut you off, but I mean to cut you off.
Yes, sir.
So if for some reason you couldn't make the project work based off of what you're trying to do, you still could do two hundred and fourteen single-family homes in, on that plot without any additional city approval?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Can we go to the conditions that the staff recommended, the slide? Because I did have a question about one of those conditions. No, no, go back to the one you just had. So the, the bullet there, the site shall be developed substantially in accordance with the preliminary site plan.
Yes, sir.
This is for staff. What does that mean? How do you measure that?
We leave that to the technical expertise of TRC. What we mean is that perhaps building locations can change, but it can be no more than what you see on-site. The pond will be substantially where it is, but designed according to city engineering.
Yeah, the, the reason I ask that, because the second one even begs it further. The exterior facade of the building shall be substantially in accordance with the look and finishes shown on the Kingsley Park elevation. Those are very broad and subjective measures. And I, I just, you know, Mr. Brown, are you and your team, are y'all comfortable with that, being that broad?
We're comfortable with the fact that there's several options on there that the UDO gives as far as complying to meet those requirements. And whether it's the facade, the, the two-foot jutting out, or whether it's a dorm or whatever it is, of those options that we have agreed that we'll pick, was it four? What do we have to comply with? I don't remember, whatever, there's seven or eight options on there and you get to pick four of them. We're going to pick one of those four or those options and make that-
So, so my point is, shouldn't that say in accordance with the UDO? Because right now, it doesn't say that. And, and, and if somebody wants to be technical, they can say, oh, well, I don't think that's in accordance with the-
Well, as of right now, the plan that we provided you with the Kingsley Park elevation is rendering that my client proposed to build out there. And according to city staff, that rendering does meet the requirements of the UDO as far as facades.
Okay. I just, I just want to make sure that we have an objective evaluation measure versus a subjective evaluation measure.
Mr. Arp, there is a separate part of the UDO which actually lists all of those.
It tells you the textures, the colors, all that. I'm familiar with that, but it doesn't say that here, so that's why I'm asking. Okay?
It's implied, but if it provides some level of comfort, we did review it with the zoning administrator.
I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Councilman Chris?
Mr. Brown, I read-
Yes, sir.
In the, over the weekend where your intent is to build this neighborhood in phases.
Yes, sir.
And those phases will take how many years to, before you complete? Four years?
We're, we're approx, we're estimating somewhere about eight months per phase. And the, the, as of right now, in similar type areas, they're renting as fast as we can build them.
Okay, so I'm back to where the mayor was moments ago. If you're building this in phases.
Yes, sir.
When do you intend to build a retention pond?
First, that'd be the first thing that's installed.
First thing, right?
Yes, sir.
The second question that I had is, the gentleman who spoke, please come up, sir. While he's coming, I'll ask you this question.
Yes, sir.
Because the statement was made, there may be some required upgrades to Lowell's, Lowell Harris Road.
Correct.
Other than the speed bump. Other than the speed bump.
Yes, sir.
Who's gonna pay for those upgrades? You're gonna put, you're fixing to unleash 800 cars a day, at least twice a day on Lowell Harris Road. Are you expecting the city to upgrade that road?
Not, if they do, it'll be the first time they've ever done it on a project I've worked on. But no, it, that's, it's, this is a private project, would, that will be privately funded.
Project, but that's not a private road.
No, but it'd be pri-.
That's a city street.
Right. Any upgrades, just like the right turn lane on Cliffdale Road, the DOT is going to require will be a, will be privately funded for the upgrades. Now, if we get to the point where, like I said, we don't know what those requirements are on Lowell Harris. But let's say y'all vote to approve this thing tonight or whenever you vote to approve it. And it moves forward, we start working back and forth with city staff. And ci- and city traffic comes back and says, well, fellas, what I need you to do is I need you to put three lanes out there from the convenience center all the way out to Cliffdale Road. Well, we're gonna come back and we're gonna say, well, that's ridiculous. We're not, we're not doing it. Well, that's what you're gonna have to do if you wanna move forward. Well, then at some point, we'll get to the point, if we cannot work it out, then the project will just die.
Well, my, my, my concern, Mr. Brown, you know, I know you well and I, you stand by your word. But with the increased traffic on Lowell Harris Road.
Yes, sir.
It's just a matter of a short time before that road will require resurfacing. And perhaps even widening with the amount of traffic that's about to be unleashed on it.
Yes, sir.
And my concern is how do we pay for it? All right. I understand. We don't know yet. Sir, I have a question because you said that you were speaking for the owners.
Yes, sir.
I believe Mrs. Connolly is here. Is that correct?
She is here.
I'm very familiar with Mrs. Barefoot and William, Bill Barefoot. I know them personally. I go to church with them.
Right.
I know her situation.
Right.
How are you legally speaking for her?
How am I legally speaking?
Do you have a power of attorney?
Mr. Barefoot has the POA and because of her condition at home, he didn't come tonight. But Ms. Connolly is here and that is her sister. So I mean, he has a POA.
So when we get down to the nitty-gritty of contractual obligations, Mr. Barefoot will be signing for his wife?
It's already signed.
Already signed.
We're under contract.
Okay. By Mr. Barefoot?
By Mr. Barefoot.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Uh, Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is for staff. Um, since it's a special use permit, I was looking for the finding of fa- the findings of facts. And I didn't know if that had been transmitted.
They issued them to you there, man?
Seventy? All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was my question.
Okay. All right. Uh, Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have a question, a few questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So my understanding, I heard you wanted to make this a gated community?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there reasoning in that? Is it just you wanted it, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask that. You just decided to make it a private streets? Is that what I'm hearing?
They're, they are private streets, uh, almost like a, a large internal driveway, so to speak. But a gated community gives people a, a more sense of security, uh, when you're staying in there. Especially if you got amenities, you got children maybe playing up at the clubhouse.
Yes, sir. I have plenty in my neighborhood. Um, my question is with these private streets, with the UDO, do, do you have to have curb and gutter on there when you have a private street?
Private streets are required to be built the same way as a public street. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And with these private streets, I'm understanding you're probably gonna have homeowners? Because to take care of the streets when they fail?
Because it would be the property, uh, the property itself, because these are rental units. So they wouldn't be a homeowner association because there'd be nothing bought. So it would be whoever owned the property would be responsible for maintaining and keeping it up as well as the amenities.
Maintaining and fixing the streets, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. So the people that own the, so it's a townhome. So it's kind of like an apartment complex that is townhomes is basically what I'm hearing?
It's basically a rental unit. It looks like a house. If you wanna call it apartment site because you're renting it, but it's, it's basically a rental townhome.
It's like rental townhomes is what I'm, what I'm seeing on my thing.
Yes, ma'am.
So those will be private streets where whoever owns the complex realizes it will be that they are in control of the streets. And if a 500-year hurricane comes, then that is the.
Responsibility of that owner.
Of the owner.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then I guess my other question was, and with the UDO, um, city, Mr. Manager, it is they do have to have curb and gutter?
Yeah.
That is a yes?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I needed. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Jensen. Councilman, Mayor Protembo?
Yes, uh, Mrs. Williams. On your PowerPoint presentation, could you go back to like one of the very first slides that had the aerial image with the yellow outline? And this is again, as other council members have asked, stormwater related. Um, understanding that property, since I've been out there many times on Leece Avenue. And you see where the forested areas, you know, it's not being fenced, it's because of the topography of the land. You know, pretty much from the corner of Lowell Harris and Cliffdale, everything generally in the, um, agriculture area is only a couple of feet difference in elevation. But then once you start to hit the forested area, it significantly drops. And we're talking 30-some feet total from the edge of that forested area to the bottom of the creek. So that's like a 30-foot drop over, ultimate 30-foot drop over roughly half the property. So looking at the proposed stormwater plan on the site plan, trying to catch that amount of water potentially from all that forested area, which naturally just, you know, soaks in, soaks in, soaks in before it hits the crick, creek. Um, sorry. Um, do you, realistically, is that stormwater pond even near the size necessary to maintain the current stormwater flow of all that pervious surface? Now changing to impervious surface, 90% of it impervious?
Um.
I noticed that, that's a. Yeah, engineering.
It is a question for, um, engineering. Mr. Freeman and I did meet with the city engineer. She was of the opinion that, um, normally why you would require a stormwater pond to be built to a 10-year storm event. She believed that because of the features of the property, that it is going to require additional stormwater measures. So you're looking at additional work being done for anywhere from a 20 to 25 to 50-year storm event.
Right. And I think I read 25 in the agenda packet. And since this is private property, um, not single-family residential private property, but one property owner or LLC, whatever. Once the property is built out and that stormwater pond, retention pond, whatever, has to be completed. Who maintains that in perpetuity? Does, does the city take that over since it's a gated community? We, we don't go in there. We won't do their trash. We won't, uh, you know, do their street sweeping or anything else. It's a gated community. So do they maintain perpetual ownership of that stormwater best practice, whatever you wanna call it? Um, cause I don't think the city should take that over. You know, you, you're not letting the public in. Uh, I think that needs to be decided or potentially, or that might be for city attorney. Could that be added as an additional condition, Attorney McDonald? If council wants to put another condition that, that, that stormwater BMP for the entire project maintains the property owner's responsibility, just like streets?
Yes, sir. We could add that condition, but, um, because it is, um, so your concern is that at some point it will tie into our stormwater system?
Well, it's going to flow into that creek. That creek flows all the way between the different housing areas behind the Lowell Harris, uh, dump recycling center. Goes under Rayford Road and into Lake Rim. So it is tied to our overall stormwater system. Because we're studying, uh, Lake Rim as part of one of our water basin studies. So yes, if a slow release or whatever, it does go into our, um, stormwater. And actually goes under a couple of roads. So can we make that a condition?
So the condition you're asking is that it not tie into the stormwater?
No, it, it's going to tie into the stormwater, the maintenance, the perpetual maintenance. If that, um, stormwater feature has, um, it, it, it stops to slow release and starts to fast release 20 years from now. Who's responsible to fix that? Cause it is gonna tie into the city's overall stormwater, uh, infrastructure.
Although it will, although it will tie into our system, it still will be maintained by the property owner and therefore the property owner's responsibility.
Right. That's, that's what I, that was my question. Can we make sure that it's their responsibility that we, the city, like, all we have these certificates of occupancy, whatever, all these stormwater um, retention ponds scattered that haven't been signed off yet? And they're just, people are paying the little monthly fee versus bringing them up to city standard?
Can I, can I?
Yeah, please, Mr. Brown.
Yeah. Mr. Brown, uh, it, because it's a private community and a private development, the, the operation and maintenance agreement is, is a differed agreement than what you do in a single-family subdivision. Where you have the opportunity at some point in time, if they were to petition the city to take over the maintenance of that stormwater measure, then it would be the city's right either to do it or not to do it. But in this case, since it's a private community, it will always be the responsibility of that, uh, property owner to be responsible for maintaining that O and M agreement. Or maintaining that, that's part of that O and M, sign is recorded and tied to the, the plat for the, uh, development. So at no, at no point will it be the city's responsibility unless, I guess, for some reason, that's part of that access and maintenance agreement. If the homeowner, if that property owner fails to do it, then the city could go back, do it and reassess the property owner for whatever it had to, uh, uh.
Right. So then that, that perpetual maintenance agreement for that stormwater, um, infrastructure on the private property would then be properly recorded with the register of deeds in the title.
Yes, sir.
And that would also, we would have a record. Okay. No, that's good.
And that's, that's, that's the city document that is signed by both the owner, signed by the city and recorded in the courthouse and a copy of it provided back to the city.
Okay. That's great. I've got one last question. I'm done.
Did the manager have something to add to that or you were?
Okay. The, um, NCDOT, uh, in here said, uh, is going to require a right turn from Cliffdale Road coming from 401 into Lowell Harris. Cause there's already a, you know, a left turn coming from the other way.
Yes, sir.
But at that corner of Lowell Harris and Cliffdale, there's a massive Duke Energy, um, transmission line pole. You've got a fire hydrant right there in the right of way and some utility boxes. Um, I remember seeing that. Has your, um, the property owner, have they reached out to, um, Duke Energy or NCDOT to see if there's even enough space? Cause there's really not enough space because of the utilities there to put a right turn lane without potentially realigning, removing, readjusting that Duke power pole, oh, you got a city, um, fire hydrant, and then there's some utility boxes there. How would you address that?
Uh, to my knowledge, uh, Duke Energy has not been approached, nor has DOT. DOT has not in the past wavered on their requirements based on utilities being in the way.
Right.
It would be the responsibility of the developer to, uh, work that out with a utility company, get those utilities out. Cause they'll be more than likely, depending on how wide Cliffdale Road's right of way is. You could have, uh, road widened unless it was already wide enough to allow a right turn lane. So that's, that's getting into the specifics as far as a lot, like the stormwater, actual size of the stormwater pond. What, what storm event's gonna be sized for, water improvements on Lowell Harris Road. That's why I said this is step one in a process that, uh, just because you approve it tonight, don't necessarily mean this thing's gonna come to fruition. We could have requirements by, like for this turn lane here or, or improvements on Lowell Harris Road. Or the city wants to do a 100-year storm event, that may kill the project. But we can't in- invest the time and the resources in trying to chase all those rabbits down until we cross this bridge here first.
No, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir. But in the event that, uh, that would be, uh, my clients and my responsibility to get that worked out. We coordinate that with DOT and with the utility companies.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Uh, Mr. Manager, you have something to say before I go to the next council member?
Yes, sir. I think, um, staff may have answered, but I'd, um, just to go on the record. Um, with this being a private road as well, I guess it's solid waste. The trash collection would be handled internally to, for the, um, for the property, not requesting the city to do that.
No, sir. We contracted out.
Okay. Well, do you think that that is gonna be rollout containers or will that be, um?
Right now, we've, we've talked about it and discussed being rollouts. Versus having a centralized dumpster on site. That, that could change. Like I said, this, like this is still early on, but we'd prefer to do the rollouts versus a, and they can keep them in the garage, wherever they want to keep them at. Versus having a, a, a compactor on site or, or two or three dumpsters.
All right. You, you, uh, finished, Mr. Manager? All right. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you. Can, Ms. Williams, can you please come back up and, and go to the slide that talked about what you're requesting or asking that we include as a part of, um, our recommendation, should we approve? Go back one more slide. There was a slide that talked about green space. Where is that at? Go forward two. One more? I think it's there. Let's see. Nope. Go, go forward again? Did you go back or forward?
That was the last slide that we had.
Okay. Well, somewhere in here, there was a slide that spoke about green space. I'd like for you to give a little bit of clarification for me as to what percentage of green space is expected with a property like this? And, um, so for example, what is the open space requirement? What are we looking at? I think that that would answer for me number five in terms of the findings of fact. And then also, and I don't know if this is a question that you can ask, and if it's not the appropriate time, um, Attorney McDonald, if you'll just let me know that. We had a presentation when we started talking about the watershed studies, about some various options for stormwater control measures. And not all of them were retention or detention ponds. Some of them were open spaces that looked like play areas that would eventually collect water and allow it to run off, you know, at its own rate. So I'm just wondering if something like that is a consideration when a person is building a project like this in terms of being able to meet the green space? Or are we just always doing retention and detention ponds? Is that just the standard that the UDO has outlined? Do you have, you got my questions there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. It's all right.
Um, in terms of, um, open space, um, based on the site, they're required to provide, uh, 5.91 acres. The site as designed is a little over six acres. So they would meet the open space requirement. We're looking at a buffer around the property. And then we've also discussed with them the option of some trails. And just as a suggestion, as if, along with the walking trail, some, you know, uh, stops, fitness stops. Where if you were walking the trail, you could stop, do an exercise, do some more walking and keep going. That's common now in communities.
Before you move from that point, is that something that they've included as, as a part of the concept that was presented? Or is that just something that the city sort of threw out there as maybe you could do this?
That's something we discussed with them in the initial meeting with, um, our technical review, uh, team.
Attorney McDonald, is that something that if we were to, if we were to say that as a part of our consideration for approval of this, that would be something that we'd like to see as a part of this plan? Or is that out of the scope of what we can request?
That is out of the scope of what we can request.
Okay.
Or require, probably is the better word.
Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry. You can finish.
And then.
Uh, Mr. McDonald, I did have a question about that. But they could amend this concept or these plans and bring that back for the council to approve or disapprove it. Is that right? If they.
Actually, it wouldn't have to come back to the council, um, because there is an open space requirement. They have met the minimum of what is required by the UDO. But if they wanted to change that to add those features, they could do that without it having to come back to the council.
But that is a condition we could put into there to, uh, to expand the amount of open space versus a minimal amount.
To expand the amount of open space?
To increase. So, so in other words, you're saying they submitted a plan that has a minimum amount of open space? So if we, could we require additional open space, uh, which you're saying? Which you're saying that that process doesn't have to come back? I was just trying to get to same end result procedurally that she was asking before she moved to her next question.
If you wanted to include that, that's correct, Mayor.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Waddell, and Mr. Brown did speak with the developer and she has agreed to include that as part of the site, the open space design with the trails.
Okay, I'll share with you my concern and then, I, I think you've answered my question sufficiently, even in terms of the watershed study aspect and, and what could be included. Well, I do want to go back to that, but we can do that another day at another time. But I would like to say that the reason for my concern is with all of the talk about stormwater control measures, I think that it's very important that we, and, and not only that, but for aesthetic purposes and for health reasons, which are two very hot topic conversations throughout the city in general. I think it's very important that if a project like this is approved, those things are considered. And that those things, if, if we as a council are looking at how we can make sure that this meets the needs not only of the individual who owns the property, but also of the citizens and the residents in that area, this is a way that, that we might be able to come to a happy, a happy medium, is making sure that there is ample green space. And when you talk about the perimeter and you, you kind of pointed at the different areas, that, that feels very restrictive still to me. It doesn't feel like a concerted effort to create a viable green space. It just kind of seems like checking the box. And, and I do realize that six acres is a tremendous amount of area. And I applaud that, but I just want to make sure that we're, we're, we are considering something that, again, like I said, meets not only the objective of the builder, but really and truly kind of checks number five off for me in that, in that area of green space. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Wright?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just a couple of questions. So in that sense, since there won't be a, an HOA, the owners of the property would be who?
Kingsley Park LLC as it's set up right now.
Kingsley Park LLC, and that will be responsible.
Responsible for anything that happens on that site, whether it's the exterior of the buildings, something happens, roofs need replacing, the streaks need replacing, amenities need upgrading. I mean, they're responsible for everything internal to those property lines.
Okay, thank you. My next question would be, when we're looking at the concept of the, the site plan, those houses on the far end here, those buffers are how wide? Are the buffers around the whole property, are they, what is the, the footage of the buffers? And?
The TIPD buffer, if I recall correctly from the UDO, between a combination of a fence and landscaping is 10 foot wide.
10 foot.
But we're, we're in excess of that. As mentioned while ago, the 10 units that we dropped off, eight of those 10 units were against this property line here. So that those buildings used to be an additional unit deep. We dropped those units off and pulled it, so you have additional buffering, buffering being separation between the unit and the existing property line. And as mentioned earlier about the landscaping and the, and the far, and wooded areas, we're going to clear absolutely no more than we have to, to put this thing on the ground.
So where is the creek running right now? The young lady was complaining about the flooding at, at this point now? So it's?
You see my cursor running up?
I see your cursor.
That's where the creek's running.
Okay, so.
Along the back of the property line.
And you stated that there's really nothing you could do but best practices as far as the UDO concerning what level of, of creek that you would put there, whether it's a 25 or 50 year. So my question would be, if approval, if, if it's disapproved, what, what would be your next option?
If it's disapproved, then it would be up to my, up to my client to either to walk away from it as a multi-use development or a multifamily development and either look back at it as a single family or just move on to the next project. Maybe you know the choice at this point.
Have, have there been a traffic study done?
No, sir, we, we approached DOT. DOT did not require a traffic study and the city of Fable, also, city of Fable Traffic said it did not warrant a traffic study. And that's something we have not volunteered and done. Either you're talking about a $10,000 study for a project that may or may not get approved.
Okay, the gated community you've mentioned is a safer community. The image that you're trying to put out there would be a better image. I have some concerns about the traffic coming in and out, although it's two roads coming out onto Lowell-Harris.
Yes, sir.
And my colleague has already spoken about those concerns. And you said that if anything needed to be done to that road, that would be something that your, your organization would take on and pay for?
That would be required, I mean, they would, the city would require us to do it. I mean, it's not going to be a joint effort, the city's going to help pay for it. It'd be developer-funded. If it got too big to be developer-funded, then just as mentioned while ago, it just ceased to.
So finally, so at this point, you came to us tonight to get a, an approval of this project going forth, but it still may be that this project don't make it based upon the UDO qualifications and the coding and things of that nature? And you're going to do everything in your best interest and what's affordable for you at this point going forward to meet all those requirements?
Yes, sir, if it, if it's straight-up UDO, I don't think we'll have a problem meeting it. It's the above and beyond stuff, like the city has the option to go above and beyond what's in the stormwater ordinance. We don't know how much above and beyond the city's going to go. We don't know what the traffic requirements are going to be. If it was straight by the UDO, then I would say yes tonight, we're, we're ready to move forward. But there's some of those unknowns that could, that could make it teeter one way or the other.
Okay, I, I understand. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Let me make sure we've covered all our questions, which I think we have. All right, Councilmember Wright?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the special use permit in Single Families 6 FS6 zoning district as presented by staff based upon the standards of the city's development code and the evidence presented during this hearing. Additionally, the application is consistent with applicable plans because, one, the development is located in a single-family FS6 district, which permits single-family attached dwellings. Two, the use spec, specific standards in multifamily dwellings have been met. Three, that this use complies with the findings listed below. Four, the proposed permit is in public interest because the purp, the proposed SUB does fit with the character of the area. Applicable to motion to approve, if approved, this special use permit shall become effective 10 days after its approval by the city council, which is June 7, 2019. The SUB shall expire one year from its effective date if the building permit is not issued within the time. For a motion to approve, all eight findings below must be met.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Wright, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Dawkins, discussion on the, Madam, Madam Attorney?
Mayor, I just wanted to make sure that that motion does include the conditions that staff outlined?
Yeah, that was the part I was coming. So if, if you will accept that, then Larry, you can just amend that portion of it to include.
Yes, I, I thought I, I did. You're talking about the eight findings of fact, in, in addition to the stack, staff recommendation? Yes, I make that amendment.
Okay, so, all right, so there's a motion to approve with conditions as articulated by staff. There's a second by Councilmember Dawkins. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, Madam Clerk, that motion carries 82. Those voting in favor, Councilman Crisp, Cullington, Art, Wright, Jensen, Hare, Dawkins and Waddell. Those voting in opposition, Colvin and Moon. At this time, we'll take a 10-minute break. Be right back. Be right back. All right. We'll reconvene our meeting. At this time, we'll go to Mr. Nash, item 8.03, for a very brief overview.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will try to make this quick. I know you just had a very long case. This is an annexation request. It is a public hearing item. It's submitted by the Kings Grant Homeowners Association for about a 5.13 acre tract along the edge of the Kings Grant neighborhood. It's adjacent to District One. Staff does recommend approval. This map shows the location of the property. The area shaded in yellow already inside the city. The area requested for annexation is shaded in blue, and the label is pointing toward it. It's along the northern edge of Kings Grant, just south of the new I-295 outer loop. Just a legal description survey-type map. The homeowners' association is in the process of developing a community park on this tract. Currently has some playground equipment and a walking trail, and a pavilion building is partially completed, not finished. The association also owns an adjoining small parcel along the edge of Burnside Place, which is the street next to the site. So if you agree to annex this parcel tonight, the association will be able to recombine the two parcels it already owns into one. And I should have... If I didn't say it, the adjoining small parcel along the northern edge of Burnside is already in the city, but the park site is not. Here's just a few pictures of the site. The one on the left is showing you looking down Burnside Place, and the site is on the left side of the road, primarily in the trees. Our zoning sign is out there on the site. You can see some of the playground equipment.
Looks good.
A bridge that's already been built for walking trails, and a pavilion building or a picnic shelter. As outlined in your memo in your packet, there are five options. As you can see them here, option one is to adopt the ordinance tonight. The staff does recommend option one, that you annex the area affected tonight, May 28th, and establish the initial zoning on the property consistent with the prior action in your zoning case, which is on your consent agenda. The reasons for the recommendation, the annexation petition is sufficient. It's been checked out by our real estate department. It meets the standards of being contiguous. City departments and PABC have reviewed it. They can serve the area. All those services, service needs would be very minimal for the site. Budget impact should be very neutral for the city, no cost or revenues. That concludes this presentation. If you have any questions?
Not sure yet, but thank you. Madam Clerk?
So we have no speakers for this item?
All right, so with that, we'll open and then close the public hearing. Madam... Councilmember Jensen?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if there's not any questions, I would like to make a motion.
I see Mr. Hare's light. Was that a...
No, I was getting rid of something.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay.
In my... In my quest to get rid of donut holes in District One, I make a motion that...
Is this District One?
Uh-huh.
Is this District One?
In District One, where we have the most donut holes, we will be minus one. I make a motion for the annexation request for the Kings Grant Homeowners Association property, northern side of Burnside Place, related to P-19-13F for initial zoning.
That's a motion by Councilmember Jensen, a second by Councilmember Hare. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes.
That's the north side.
Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Welcome to the city, sir. Thank you, Kings Grant. Yeah, I saw you vote. Did you vote?
Mm-hmm.
You did not vote.
He's slipping over there.
You vote green? All right. Slipping, huh?
Yeah, he's slipping.
All right, that's all right. We got you. All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Item 9.01, the presentation of appointment committee recommendation, and 9.2 are kind of related, and I'll defer to the appointments committee chair, Mr. Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. The appointments committee did meet, and without further ado, the appointments committee consisted of Mr. Mayor, me, Councilmember Jensen, and Councilmember Waddell.
Yes.
And senior staff members were present, and thank you to Jennifer, Erin, Pam, for the great work that they do in guiding us and keeping a record of our proceedings, because it's not easy when we had fifty-some applicants for the millennial. Here we are. The appointments committee unanimously approved the following recommendations to this city council for appointments as follows. For the Joint City and County Appearance Commission, we recommend Mr. Clyde Foster for July 1st, 2019 to September 30th, 2019, partial. For the Favour Redevelopment Commission, we do recommend Mrs. Ashley McDuffie, again, July 1st, 2019 to March 31st, 2020, partial. To fill... Partial means filling a... You know what I mean. Favour Cumberland Human Relations Commission, we do recommend Ms. Jerry Reedus, Dawn Ryumi, Franco Webb, and Simone Pemberton. For the Millennial Commission... Part of these will serve one year. Six will serve... The first six that I call, we're recommending they serve one year, and the second seven will serve a two-year term. For the one-year term, Mr. Mario Benevente.
Yes, sir.
Mr. John Kiesler, Ms. Gabrielle Allison, Kendra Conyers, Zakeas Ely, Malik Davis. Those are the six people for the one-year term. For the two-year term, Mr. Pavin Patel, Ms. Brittany Ray, Mr. Chaz Dawson, Ms. Kayla McLoglin, Ms. Catherine Lane, Mr. Antonio Renteria, and Mr. Tristan Bailey. Those are the thirteen members that this appointments committee recommends to council for appointment. If there are no questions, I would move that council approve the recommendations for Joint City and County Appearance Commission, Favour Redevelopment Commission, Favour Cumberland Human Relations Commission, and the Millennial Commission. That is my motion.
Thank you. It's a motion by Councilmember Chris. I don't know if there's a second by Councilmember Waddell? Okay. There's a second by Councilmember Waddell. A discussion on the motion. I'd just like to thank the appointments committee. I had... Didn't know the amount of work that you all do, looking through those applications, and I was able to join you for a meeting, so certainly commend you for the hard work that you do each time there's an appointment. And just wanted to clarify, I witnessed this process and took part of it, and it was maybe two to three hours. This committee used the highest standards to go through the applications. We had a lot of interest in the Millennial Commission, which was the goal. There were over fifty applicants that were interested in getting to work in your city. And I'll say that this first team is just a drop in the bucket to the amount of work, and so there's a lot of available opportunity for you if you had an interest and applied to this, that we've got plenty of work in the vineyard. So don't be discouraged, and we'll be contacting you to make sure that you stay engaged. But I'm very encouraged about the future of our city, not only for these other boards, but particularly for the Millennial Council and the amount of interest that was shown. So tonight, council will make a decision whether to accept these recommendations, and look forward to working with each of you real soon. All right, any other comments, Madam Waddell? Okay. All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, the next item, 9.02, is a revision of the bylaws for the Millennial Advisory Commission. This is necessary because the appointments that council just approved were based on the criteria that six people serve one year and seven people serve two years. Now, having done this for the initial group, we need to amend these bylaws and take out the clause concerning the one year and go to two years with staggered terms. All right? And the second part of that is, and Dr. Whitfield will get this done if you approve this and get it out to everybody, and the second part is to incorporate in this a charge to that Millennial Commission. The charge consisting of four items, which was embedded in an email we sent you, but I want to read them just to be sure, that they are to attend the scheduled board orientation facilitated by staff in June. They will be notified by the City Clerk's office and receive clarity on their purpose and responsibilities. Dr. Whitfield will be present at that. Organize their executive board by properly electing a chair, vice chair, secretary, and director of programs, as is stipulated in the bylaws. Third, increase their understanding of the city's vision. Establish priorities and operations through multiple discussions with staff on the strategic plan, resident survey results, and annual budget prior to making any recommendation to city council. These thorough discussions should be used as constant meeting agenda items over this first year. Fourth, and finally, present an initial annual report of activities to city council in the fall of calendar year 2020. That is the motion to amend the bylaws and incorporate those four items as a charter to the millennial group. I so move.
All right. This is a motion by Councilmember Chris. There's a second by Councilmember Wright to make the required amendments, administrative amendments. We said, well, there's a question?
No questions.
Okay. Discussion on the motion, Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you. Mr. Chris, where are you seeing those four points at? Because I don't see that in my packet.
They were sent to you in an email, Mrs. Waddell.
What... Did that... That's the email where he was asking for feedback, right? Because I had provided some feedback on that to him, and I don't hear any of the...
Well, he sent the email out weeks ago.
Right.
But I haven't heard anything from you, so...
Right.
I have to assume that the last biscuit on the table is...
Well, no, but I thought that...
...to feed everybody.
I thought that what we would be voting on was what was in our packet. I didn't get any update in the packet.
Well, it's in there. In there, it says, "Please see the proposal below." Proposal. Millennial Advisory Commission initial charge. In order to effectively advise the city council on issues relevant to the attraction, retention, and engagement of young adults in favour over the next twelve months, members of the Millennial Advisory Commission will...
Yes, sir. I read that email. I read that, and I responded to Mr. Whitfield, and I guess that's what my concern is, is that I did respond to Mr. Whitfield, and we had some communication about that. So I was basing what we were voting off off of what was in granite. It's not off of the email that was sent. But I can... Go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just gonna share an email that was in there from... Oh, okay, May 22nd, where it said that he didn't receive any feedback.
And that's when I followed up with him and gave him my feedback.
Well, I didn't hear anything from you. I sent a follow-up email over the weekend, and asking for feedback and for each council member to thoroughly familiarize themselves with what we were doing. And having heard nothing, I had to assume that everything was...
Did you have something?
It was okay.
There is an appointments committee meeting tomorrow.
Yes.
I would envision that this would be potentially the first of several amendments, because once the commission is actually impaneled and they've had a chance to work, there may be additional changes and edits, but certainly the appointments committee could bring... take this up tomorrow if you choose, and...
Mr. Mayor, let me ask this question. I would like to amend my motion to take the part off about the charter. Then, Madam Attorney, can we add that to the agenda for tomorrow? And add it to the agenda for our meeting tomorrow?
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chris, and I apologize for not including you in my response. Please forgive me for that.
It's all right. We're okay. We're gonna get it done.
So, Mr. Chris, you're...
So where we are... Yes, ma'am.
Can you restate?
You're proposing to table this item for further discussion tomorrow during the appointments...
Hold on, Madam Attorney.
No, no.
I was gonna ask him to restate.
No, no, I'm gonna restate the motion. My motion is to amend the bylaws, to take out the provision that required us to appoint six persons for a one-year term. To amend the bylaws, go back to two-year staggered terms with half. That's the motion at present. And to table the charge until tomorrow's appointment committee meeting. That is the motion. Is that satisfactory, Madam Attorney?
It's a new motion, so... Yes, sir.
It's your motion. I think it's whether it will meet Councilmember Waddell's interest.
Yeah, so we just need a second. Well, Councilmember Wright, had you seconded it initially?
I seconded the initial, so I'll come back and...
Second amendment.
The amendment, okay. All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Chris, a reemphasized second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? The amended motion? All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. All right, motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Great night.